I'd like to call this regular Bryan City School Board meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with Roy, please, Mr. Osmond.
Scott Benadega.
Here.
Sandra Keeler.
Here.
Tom Lingby.
Here.
Deb Updike.
Here.
Mike Stockman.
Here.
Thank you.
All right. You have had an opportunity to look at the regular April Board meeting as well as the special Board meetings. If there are no corrections, I would like a motion to approve.
So moved.
Thank you, Deb.
No.
I heard Mike a second. Thank you, Mike.
Sandra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, tonight we have a full evening of communications. We have Mrs. Von Dalen's class, fourth grade class, in their butterfly garden first, up first. We'd like to invite the kiddos in. Keep coming towards us. Right here. Oh.
And do we have the clever section?
We will.
Come right here to this front row. They don't want to keep holding them.
It's your choice if you want to present with the plan you can, or you can set it down until we show them time.
Nagali, is there a good spot real quick, sorry, for the students? Do they come over to this corner when they talk? So... Miss Von Dalen, if we could have them as they come and talk?
Up in that corner and then come back to the area.
Yep, yes, if that's okay, when they give their little talk.
So we'll get our slide here ready.
Okay.
Once that's on and we'll be... Just a little somewhere. Hi there.
Hi, how are you?
If you can get yourselves in order, that'd be helpful, but we're kind of short on space. Mind if I move this just for a sec? Sit my laptop on the floor. All right, so I'll get us started and then it's up to the kids. All right, so I am Miss Von Dalen and we've had kind of a full year of caterpillar things and butterfly things. I've done this a couple of years in the past because I have monarch butterflies in my garden. So I usually bring them into school. We read Mr. McGinty's Monarchs and do some fictional stuff with it. We read some nonfiction. We watch the butterflies come out and that's usually it. But I noticed this year that a lot of our students, some of them in this room and some that couldn't make it tonight, had a really, really strong interest in what we were doing. And they were going to find butterflies on their own and they really kind of wanted to keep the conversation going. And so way back in September, October, when our last butterfly that we had tagged went off to Mexico, we assumed they made it. We just always assume the best. We kind of started talking about how we need to have more plants for butterflies and caterpillars to eat and how cool would it be if we could kind of get this garden going. And so we had the idea and then we kind of sat on it until Christmas time or so. Then we started talking about it some more and the kids have done the majority of the planning and the work, multiple aspects of that. So they're here to present what has happened since we let our butterflies go and had this idea. And the one picture you can see down there is that's our classroom we set up. The one day, we got a document camera in there and we could watch when they were about ready to come out of their chrysalis. And I think we caught all three in the middle of class, didn't we?
Yeah.
We stopped what we were doing. We had kind of a celebration. Always a big thing is see if it's a boy or a girl and then we carried on with class. So that's where it started and now we'll see what they've done with that. Ethan, if you want to go, best if you stand right there in that corner.
So the camera can see you.
All right.
We started this project back in, like, we started planning in September since, like what she said, we liked the project a lot. And then we started thinking, we kind of did a couple worksheets, we thought of poems to write. And then the big thing was planning to get how much money we need and how much supplies. When we started, our original budget was probably really high. And we tried to lower it down and try to get donations, which you'll see later. And try to get as much as lower price stuff as we can, save money. We have a couple, we have a selected spot where we want our garden. I think that's next or something. But in our classroom, we had the document camera. There at school because you could see that we liked this project very much. And then we have a, we did a lot of garden individual groups to discuss different topics like what's happening to the butterflies? Why should we do this? How will this happen? How is this important to our schools? And then we did one big group. And just discussed, did a lot of worksheets, read books. And then we had the big proposal at the lecture hall, which we got approved. And then we did more planning and then we're here.
So our location is near the flagpole, which is about 120...
There near the top bud, right there. Five feet by...
Five feet by...
Oops. There we go.
Five goal, and I'm just going to be five feet by 20 feet. There's natural mulch.
Yep, we're going to get that.
And it's a place where people can see and there's lots of sunlight.
Good job. Next is layout and our plants, so Jaylen.
The plants we have for our donors are yellow butterfly weed, orange butterfly weed, purple aster and purple cone flower, sage and hostas. Milkweed is very important to have in our garden because butterflies lay their eggs on the leaves. The caterpillars eat the milkweed. We also have perennials. Perennials come back every year. Some examples of perennials are cone flower, sage and more.
We also had our students, while this group was working on their presentation, the rest of the class that couldn't be here tonight, they got together in small groups and they kind of mapped out where they would envision some of our plants being and take into account some of our other plants that Farrell's will be bringing with them on Wednesday. So we got to do some mapping activities. All right. Nisha?
At the beginning of this project, we needed milkweed plants, hostas, cone flowers, to name a few. So we reached out to ask some of our local businesses if they would be generous enough to donate some of the materials we may need.
So fortunately, we heard back from some of the people, some of the companies we reached out to and they have decided to donate us some of the materials that we will need. Like Oberlin Recycling, they donated us some mulch. And then Straight Gate donated us some plants. And then Farrell's will be doing, they donated plants and they offered mulch, but we already had it. And then they will be helping us plant our garden.
So some of our plants we already have, these have been donated by those businesses at Farrell's. They're bringing theirs Wednesday, but these are from some of our parents, our families, as well as Straight Gate. I picked up their generous donations this afternoon. So if you guys maybe want to make a line there and share your plants? And tell us maybe one or two things about your plants so we can keep moving here.
So this is a hosta. It's a perennial. It does better in shade, but we're thinking that if we could plant plants around it, it will get the shade it needs.
This is the hello yellow butterfly flower. It needs part sun or just sun. And this is the dianthus bird radiance. And its height is four to six feet inches.
This is the fir... Fir leaf oil. Fir leaf dough. And this attracts swallow leaf butterflies. And it will grow, it needs six plus hours of sun and it will grow 12 to 15 inches apart. And it will grow 18 to 12 inches wide.
Mine is the east fries and meadow sage. My family donated this plant. It is a perennial and it needs full sun.
This is the purple aster. And it attracts butterflies and it's deer resistant and it also attracts hummingbirds.
This is the grenada gold cone flower. It has full sun, so our spot where we have it is in full sun. It is easy care. It is about 18 to 22 inches tall and 22 to 24 inches wide and it's deer resistant.
This is the milkweed. It's deer resistant and it needs full sun and the date, the bloom date is summer.
This is a cone flower. It does best in full sun and is drought tolerant.
Do you remember why we said we wanted drought tolerant plants?
Because our, where we have our location is in full sun.
And are we there all summer to water it? Do we want extra work for our custodians? All right, good job.
Nice job.
And what we still need?
So we've already got a lot of the stuff that we need, but we still need the site prepared. We also need the sod removed and good soil needs to be brought in. Farrell's will bring equipment and people to remove the sod and add tops of soil.
We will, we will need $300 for that to be done to our garden area.
So we have a couple of plans to thank all of our people that donated and businesses. So we thought maybe an idea was we could put a sign at the front of our butterfly garden that lists all of our donates and donators. We could also do a newspaper article that would just list all of them. Or we could put it out on social media so we'd get to see the garden and who all donated.
Our butterfly garden will help younger students with their science and their growing techniques. And a weigh station is a place where you have to have amount of feet of your butterfly garden with, you can get a sign for it and make it a registered butterfly garden.
And news to our students is word's getting out about our butterfly garden. And Mrs. Bosco, who teaches fifth grade science, wants to continue this project with you into next year. So you guys get to continue working with your butterfly garden. So your other teachers are getting excited and will be doing that. So we have questions and answers. Why don't maybe you guys make a line up here and you can take any questions the board might have or even people out there in our little audience there?
I have a question. Do you know when they plan to break ground? So take off the top layer and bring in your good dirt. This Wednesday? Nice, okay.
We're pretty ambitious. Actually, if we get the go ahead, we can, we'll break ground tomorrow and we plant Wednesday. That way we have a full week of school that we can water it and baby it and get it going before we leave it. Hope for the best. So, yeah.
Any other questions we'd like to ask these students? So for water at the site, do you have plans for getting water there to the site?
Well, actually, we're trying to put drought tolerant plants, sorry. So like the rain can take care of it and so that there isn't really need to put much water there.
We don't get much rain around here.
It's glad we didn't have this in a couple of weeks ago. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you for sharing with us this evening.
Let me get Mrs. Boyd.
Okay.
As well, we're going to put those in my basket out there. They're coming out. Good job, good job. Good job. Good job.
All right, Ike, you're taking my seat. Glad to do that. Hi, I won't take much time. I know you guys have a busy schedule tonight. I just wanted to kind of officially inform you of Ike's retirement. He has, he's been here for six years. Ike is eight years old. He is now dealing with some health issues. And so it's going to be necessary for him to retire. He's got some back and mobility issues and then he has lymphoma. And so it's time for him to not be here at school anymore. So we had a very nice assembly this afternoon at the elementary school. It was very well attended. We probably had over 900 people there. So it was a captive audience because it was all the students, but it was very nice. He's got his medal on. He got a medal from Mayor Schley. Special Brian Honorary Medal or whatever, some special person medal. So he got that today and the kids were all very, very nice. And we had cards written and pictures drawn and things like that. So just wanted to let you know and to thank you for all of the support that you've given over the past years. Some of you have been here, some of you haven't, but Ike has, well, the school therapy dog program has been here for 14 years now. And we're very fortunate to have had three wonderful dogs. We had Ally, Gracie and Ike. And Ike is now retiring. So we'll see what happens next. We'll take it from there. But thank you so much. We couldn't do it without your support and without your approval and without your help for all of the various things. So I do want to thank you. This year, our fundraiser, we're selling Ike water bottles. So Mrs. Savage, I brought you an Ike water bottle.
Thank you.
Sold out last week, but we ordered more. So if anybody wants an Ike water bottle for our fundraiser this year, that's what we have. So thank you so much from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you for doing all that. Jackie, how many years have you been involved in it? You were involved from almost from the very beginning.
From the very beginning. Shelley, Warner, A.G. and I were the two.
Right, well, it's a long time ago, so it's tough to remember that far back.
But yes, she and I were the pioneers. And as far as we know, of a full-time dog being placed in a school, Brian is the pioneer for that. And so it's been exciting. We've built it. Now there are dogs in many schools around Ohio. There are dogs on waiting lists, or schools on waiting lists to get school therapy dogs from the facility that we get our dogs. So it's been really exciting. We've been from Bryan, Ohio, to Southern Ohio, even to California to present our program. We went to Los Angeles one year where they invited us with Ally. So it's been quite a ride.
Thank you.
A very wonderful experience. And I believe it's benefited a lot of children. And now you hear about therapy dogs and emotional support dogs in schools and facilities all the time. And we felt that we were on the cutting edge of that. So thank you for allowing us to do that.
Jackie, are you still involved with the program?
Yeah, yeah, in whatever ways I can. Yeah, I hope to volunteer with them and to still help any schools or, you know, anytime. I get people who email me at times saying they're thinking of a dog, so I try and help them. Rich and Deb Taverney, Rich Taverney was an administrator here a few years ago. And they reached out to me last spring and have, I helped them through the process of getting a therapy dog for their school in Fort Wayne now. So, yeah, I still hope to be involved in as many ways as I can. Something you can't just give up.
Do we have the possibility of getting another dog?
That's, it's being discussed at this point. It'll be up to the counseling department at the school. I know there are people who have stepped up and offered to house a dog. And we have several people who would help with it throughout the day. So I'm hopeful that it will happen.
Because I think it's a great program and it's very beneficial to the kids and staff, everybody.
Yeah. Yep, he's probably the most popular kid at school. So anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
On behalf of the board, we do want to recognize Ike and congratulate him on his retirement. And by the way, the program today was lovely. It was very arranged. Kiddos did a nice job and everybody. So...
He had a great time.
We had a wonderful time. We would like to present Ike.
Come here, Ike.
Are you hogging Mrs. Vannaday? Sit.
Hi Ike.
Sit.
Hi buddy, I saw you today, didn't I?
Somebody's petting me. You sit. That's a good boy. Stay.
I'm happy, I'm happy you're retiring. I was looking for a treat. You gonna take that? You take?
Thank you, Jackie, for all you've done. Yes, it's been a pleasure.
Thank you.
It's been wonderful. Yes, thank you so much. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Now you don't have to pick up and drop off every day.
I know. It was weird because I was retired and I'm dropping him off at school at 7:15 and I'm dropping him off at 2:30 like a kid. That was fun.
Thank you again.
Yep.
Okay, next on our communications, we have Mr. John Betts that would like to speak to the board.
Enjoy.
Yeah.
Enjoy.
Yeah. Well, we certainly appreciate following kids and a dog. Thank you for setting us up with such competition. You're going to need to excuse me because I'm going to read this. For some reason, people tend to appreciate me more when I follow a script. I'm not sure why, but I'm starting to get that understanding. So I will read this, but if there's any questions or whatever, I can take them. But it'll also only take like two or three minutes. We'd like to thank you for allowing Joy and I to repeat our request of three to four years ago to the BCS Board to assure the BCS student safety by leasing only motor coaches with seat belts. As most of you are aware, on March 2nd, 2007, our son David and four other Bluffton University baseball players, along with the bus driver and his wife, all died in a motor coach crash in Atlanta on their way down to their spring baseball games. Their deaths were a result of blunt force trauma that is being thrown from their seats and hitting something very hard, very fast. Had they been belted in, the players would all be alive today. That's not my assessment. That's a scientific one and forensic one post the accident. Motor coaches weigh over 20 tons. They travel 70 miles an hour plus, are 10 feet high and made up mostly of non-safety glass. Joy and I and many others worked for over five years to get, and it was work, to get a national wheel pass to increase motor coach safety, which came to fruition in July 2012. One such provision in that motor coach safety bill was a federal mandate that all new motor coaches be equipped with three-point restraints no later than 2016. Many motor coach manufacturers, in order to get ahead of the game market-wise, started putting seat belts on their motor coaches starting in 2013. Greyhound is an example of that. Joy and I assure that the BCS Board agrees with us that the safety of our children is a priority. Therefore, we believe the BCS School Board can easily accommodate one such safety feature with a very simple, no-cost solution. That is through board policy, the current transportation form can change to state in a checkoff box the following. If the transportation form for this field trip includes the use of motor coaches, the Board requires that only motor coaches with seat belts be leased and with motor coach companies with the best reputation for meeting NITSA, National Highway Travel and Safety Administration, safety standards and their own safe driving records, which they have and are required by law, to show you, by the way. And then all chaperones will assure that they and the students utilize the seat belts during the duration of the school-sponsored trip. The belt does little help if it's not used. This simple request fix needs to be done for two very important facts. One, motor coaches with seat belts are currently readily available by all companies for lease and are no more expensive due to having seat belts. And two, motor coaches with seat belts save lives and reduces injuries. This simple adjustment to your transportation form does two things. It reaffirms a message to the community that you care about the safety and well-being of BCS students on field trips and will also serve as a document the Board can utilize if, in the unfortunate occurrence, BCS does have a motor coach crash. This document slash form will indicate you did everything possible to assure the choice of the motor coach and company was done with safety in mind, thereby reducing BCS liability. Already lived that life. I'm telling you, the liability is high. You can believe me, you can live it. I don't much care. Since this is our second request of the Board, after your deliberation and decision, Joy and I would like to be notified in writing of your decision and your rationale if you decide not to proceed with this form adjustment or some other adjustment that you think will ensure the consistent requests for and obtaining of motor coaches with three-point restraints. So thanks and again for your time. And that's it. I mean, if you have questions, be glad to answer them. But it's kind of simple and straightforward. And you guys can deliberate and, you know, later, and just let me know or let us know.
Thank you, John.
We definitely appreciate your time, both of you. And any other questions? We will bring this up in discussion and let you know.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
There was one other communication I didn't see on here. I didn't catch that. I'm just so used to seeing it, but, Fort County?
Fort County.
Just super quick, I only have three little sentences. And that is tomorrow is Passport Day, or also known as Senior Recognition. We'd like to congratulate all of our seniors at Fort County from the Bryan School District that will be receiving their passports tomorrow. So that's very exciting. And then the students' last day, the juniors, will be May 23rd. They've wrapped up their school year. And going into the 1920 school year, last count that I was told, they have 467 sophomores entering as juniors. So there's still room for a little bit more, but Fort County does fill up. So it's a great, great facility out there for students that are looking for that education. Okay, we shall move on then with the treasurer's recommendations.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with the final.
We'll start with the financial reports for the month ended April 30th, 2019. At Farmers Emergent State Bank, we had a balance of $5,579,153. Outstanding checks and adjustments totaled $27,835. At Star Ohio Investments, $919,879. At UBS Financial, $4,293,545. At State Bank, $6,342,656. And at Star Ohio Plus, $2,454,111. Petty cash and change funds totaled $7,150. Total funds on hand as of April 30th, $19,668,660. Of those funds, our general fund balance was $14,712,137. Our bond retirement fund, $1,670,895. And our permanent improvement fund, $1,842,875, making up some of our major funds. Once again, our total balance, $19,568,660. Our SM2 report, our revenues are about $226,000 above, ahead of budget, and our expenses about $221,000 below. So, we had about a $447,000 positive variance. Any questions regarding those reports? If not, we'll move on to amended appropriations. Our appropriation total is, at this time, $28,189,83. During the month, we had modifications of $196,207. Most of those were in our permanent improvement fund, where we increased revenues or increased appropriations by $215,000, mostly to get ready for some of our acquisitions for the upcoming school year. Any questions on the appropriation resolution? If not, the next item is a construction change order. As we finish up some of our work on the project, there's a change order to Rudolph Libby for That was to make some of the repairs on the HVAC system. We had some issues over there and that will also be charged back to the architect. So, we'll increase one side and decrease another's contract to offset that. Next, five-year forecast. Each year, Department of Education asks all school districts in Ohio to mock, to create a five-year forecast. We present one in May and the second one in October each year. As we look at our current fiscal year, 2019, our property tax revenue is $6,784,500. This was a reappraisal year here in Williams County, tax year 2018 payable in 2019. As a result of those changes in our property values, our total valuation for the district is now $274,961,670, as compared to $263,777,000 previously. Increase of about 4.2% in our valuation. As we look from 2019 outward, we see some increases projected in our property tax revenue. That's mostly the tangible personal property replacement money being phased out, so we'll start collecting that in our property tax. That's the reason for those increases. School district income tax, this year, our actual revenue was $3,386,000. That is about 5.7% above last year's collection. As we move forward in the forecast, I placed a 2% increase on fiscal year 2020 and 2021 estimates and a 1% increase on fiscal year '22 and '23. We've been seeing growth in that area, in the, in the school district income tax. The economy's been good, employment's been high, unemployment's been low. So, we've seen some growth in this area. So, I'm gonna continue to project some of those increases outward, maybe a little more strongly than I have in the past. And restricted grants and aids, this is our money we receive from the state of Ohio for our foundation money. This year, we have a total of $7,755,000. That includes $104,000 of casino tax money. About $196,000 more than last year, about 2.6% increase. As we, Diana and I have listened to what's going on in Columbus with the state budget, we've tried to keep our ear tuned as to what's happening with education funding. The House version of the budget didn't include much of anything for us. So, I plugged in $50,000 a year increase in state foundation money, starting next year, moving out four years. Don't know for certain what it is yet, they haven't finished the budget. But I put a little bit of growth in there because they've always given us a little bit of something. So, we left $50,000 growth per year in that line. Our property tax allocation, that's our rollbacks, 2.5% homesite credit, homestead exemption, and our tangible personal property replacement money. This year, that totals $1,500,000. And then, other income, all other revenues total $1,709,000. So, for this year, we project about $21.4 million of revenue. On the expense side, our expenses total $22,61,000. Our personnel expenses make up about 59% of that. Retirement and insurance benefits make up about 24%. So, labor infringes make up about 83% of our operating budget. On the purchase services and supplies and materials, I built in a half of a percent increase in those budget lines, moving out. Now, on the labor infringes, I used our actual labor that we have now and just projected out where they would be on the salary schedules, going out three or four years. So, our expenses this year, like I said, about $22 million. So, we're projecting deficit spending for this year of about $627,000 in this forecast. We normally do not spend all of the appropriations we have. So, that $627 is a conservative number, probably worst case, we'll probably finish better than that. But I would still expect that we will probably have some deficit spending this year. So, moving forward, our cash balance at the end of this fiscal year is projected to be And as you can see, as we move through the forecast, the deficit spending continues to increase. In our final year of this forecast, we project a final cash balance of about $1,967,000. So, the district still will be in the red at the end of that five-year period. Our current status is still very strong, $12.3 million carried forward, if not more. So, currently, once again, the district starting to move into that deficit spending situation. I will have to watch what we do carefully as we move forward, but revenues are pretty flat-lined, except for some growth in the income tax. Any questions on the forecast? All right.
At least not right now.
Need some time.
It's always a forecast. Moving forward, we have a technical contract that we sign on an annual basis with Northern Buckeye Education Council for some of our services technology-wise. We have asking for your approval on lease agreement for one year with community hospital and wellness centers for the parking area up at the old high school property they've rented from us in the past. They've expressed interest in doing so again for another year, and that starts August 1st of 2019 and goes through July 31st of 2020. We ask for your approval of a property and liability and fleet insurance quote from Andre's Neil &amp; Low Agency, a cost of $70,946 for the year. And finally, we'd like to recognize some donations from Benjamin and Rebecca Jackson, $750 for second-grade reading books, from Caitlin Bernath, $195 that she donated to the elementary building, the Academic Booster Club donation, $97.50 for a special ed trip to Fort Wayne Children's Zoo, and Academic Booster Club also, $500 for our computer insurance fund, and from Laura Knight and her sister Julie, a donation of $400 to our choir department. We thank all those organizations and individuals for their generous support for our district. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Rasmussen. Are there any questions? If not, I will take a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
So moved.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Tom.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Sandra.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to old business.
Yes, under old business, I do have a short update from Coach Owens and the tennis committee. As you know, they've been working on raising funds to put in tennis courts on our school property. So, the current fundraising totals, $447,000 in commitments thus far. This does not include a potential additional grant of $50,000 from USTA. They feel like they will reach the $500,000 mark sometime in June and be well on their way. They're, while they're focusing on wrapping up the fundraising portion of the project, they are also working on the design. One of their representatives went to Indianapolis to meet with the contractor. The contractor is Leslie Coatings. They've done tennis courts all over, probably the most well-known in this area at the University of Notre Dame. Leslie Coatings has provided us specifications on the scope of the project, which I shared with board members. The asphalt subcontractor has come and surveyed the site and has sent his project scope. And they are working to identify an architect that will draw up the plans, and those will be shared with the Board as well. The Board had questions in the scope. They wanted to share that they will share their, the Board's request on making sure that everything is left in its original condition. In fact, it's the committee's goal to leave the area in better condition than it, than what it is now, since it will be the site of their matches. They are working to improve drainage, adding walkways, and to accommodate for the courts and the increased traffic. So, working on that, that continues in the planning process. So, any questions that you'd like me to share with the committee?
I don't think so.
The only thing I can think of is this 50K potential from USTA. How, when, when will they know? I mean, what's, what does that hinge on? I mean, are they waiting on something from us?
No, they're waiting on just a response from USTA.
And they're at, what was the number they're at?
$447,000 in commitments.
And their goal was to get to 500?
Their, they hope to get to 500 by June. Their original goal, I think, was 550.
Good.
Then, moving on to new business and superintendent recommendations, it is time to recognize the class of 2019. So, as per your exhibit, contingent upon their completion of studies is required by the Bryan State of School and the State of Ohio. We will be graduating this coming Sunday. So, we look forward to that. We have an agreement with Northwest State Community College for clinical affiliation, for them to place student teachers in clinical hours here in our building and for us to work with them. We have a Defiance College MOU, which is also for student teachers for next year. We have the approval of the 2019-20 student handbook for grades K to 12, including an addendum for each building, and those were sent to you earlier for your review. We also have an agreement with the Northwest Ohio Juvenile Detention, Training and Rehabilitation Center, which is an annual agreement that we work with in case students have to be placed in that location. Are there any questions regarding any of those contracts, MOUs, or agreements?
If not, I'll take a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations. So moved. Thank you, Deb.
Second.
Thank you. Mike?
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, under personnel recommendations, quite a lengthy list as well, as we're getting ready for next school year. We'll start with our student summer workers on an as-needed basis at minimum wage for both technology and custodial. We have our summer step-ahead high school teachers. Our step-ahead program is a credit recovery program. It's offered to students free of charge for any failures that they may have had during the school year so that they can stay on track for graduation. Our high school summer school teachers, we offer a chance for students as well to kind of work ahead in their curriculum and their requirements. So, we offer phys ed and oral communications. A one-year limited teaching contract, beginning with next school year, for Tyler Davy as middle school intervention specialist, bachelor's level, zero years experience. Tyler, actually, a student taught with us. He graduates from Defiance College and was, we were very lucky to have him continue on. And then, Danielle McQuillan, middle school intervention specialist, bachelor's year, four years, bachelor's level, four years of experience, pending verification. Danielle is originally from Northwest Ohio, and she is coming back to be closer to family. She's been working in the Dayton area. Transfer of classified staff, Myrna Romez, is a third, two-third shift, 6-12 building custodian, effective June 3rd. Transfer of Janice Gardner for next school year to server, shipping and receiving, pre-K5 food service, effective August 1st. Transfer of certified staff, Leah Sturt will be going to fifth-grade intervention specialist with a focus on ELA. And Jacob Sturt will be going to Bryan High School as an intervention specialist. We've had such a good response this year with our SRO program that we want to continue that by offering a two-year limited contract to both Matthew Franzdorff and Stan Nyheart as SRO officers, effective August 1st of 2019. And that will coincide with the MOU that we have with the city. So, our MOU was a three-year agreement, so we'll be on track with them. A three-year limited contract to Haley Brown as EMIS coordinator, effective August 1st, 2019. Continuing teaching contracts for Ann Bible, who works as our media specialist, Erica Collins, who's at sixth grade, Lisa Heslop is our high school Spanish, Lindsay Slagel is in second grade, and Jennifer Grant is our elementary art teacher. Brad Eikhoff has reached his master's degree, and we congratulate him on his hard work. So, that will be a salary schedule placement effective for next school year. We have a correction for Chanda Swank as our school psychologist. This contract was previously approved. Chanda has requested- four years, bachelor's level, four years of experience, pending verification. Danielle is originally from Northwest Ohio, and she is coming back to be closer to family. She's been working in the Dayton area. Transfer of classified staff, Myrna Romez is a third, two-third shift, six-to-twelve building custodian, effective June third. Transfer of Janice Gardner for next school year to server, shipping, and receiving, pre-K five food service, effective August first. Transfer of certified staff, Leah Sturt will be going to fifth-grade intervention specialist with a focus on ELA, and Jacob Sturt will be going to Bryan High School as an intervention specialist. We've had such a good response this year with our SRO program that we want to continue that by offering a two-year limited contract to both Matthew Fransdorf and Stan Nythart as SRO officers, effective August first of two thousand nineteen. And that will coincide with the MOU that we have with the city. So our MOU was a three-year agreement, so we'll be on track with them. A three-year limited contract to Haley Brown as EMIS coordinator, effective August first, two thousand nineteen. Continuing teaching contracts for Ann Bible, who works as our media specialist, Erica Collins, who's at sixth grade, Lisa Heslop is our high school Spanish, Lindsay Slagle is in second grade, and Jennifer Grant is our elementary art teacher. Brad Ikoff has reached his master's degree, and we congratulate him on his hard work. So that will be a salary schedule placement, effective for next school year. We have a correction for Chanda Swank as our school psychologist. This contract was previously approved. Chanda has requested to reduce the number of days, which in, in fact, will reduce her salary for next year. She feels that she is confident the two hundred and five days is fair and adequate to get her job done, and so we appreciate her being conscious of helping us as a district to work through that. Offering a two-year administrative contract to Justine Curry, elementary administrator with a special ed background, she, that is effective August first. Justine is a special ed director currently at Antwerp. She brings to us ten years of special ed experience and leadership role. Nonrenewal of supplemental contracts of our non-certificated staff, this is not a reflection of their performance this spring, but an annual action for those who do not serve in a teaching capacity here in the district. Classified substitutes to approve to get us through the end of the year, and certified substitutes as well, that are new. And then you're going to see a nonrenewal of all of our substitutes, both classified and substitute teachers, again, not a reflection of their performance, but an annual action that we take in the spring. We do have some teachers that are resigning some positions within the district. Blake Rocky as high school intervention specialist. Blake has taken a position in the private business world, and we wish him the best. Ashley Rice is second and third grade intervention specialist. Kelly Myers, paraprofessional aide, has chosen to retire. Carrie Wilhelm, assistant girls soccer. Brittany Sanders, assistant volleyball. Nathan Neese, guidance counselor and boys' head soccer coach. Nathan has secured a position down in southeast Ohio, closer to his family, so we wish him the best as well. We wish all of the people with their new positions. And Sharon Jacobs as bus driver, effective May seventeenth. We want to congratulate and wish Mr. Will the best in his retirement as band director, effective May thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. And then again, as we prep for next school year, we have the first round of supplemental contracts for our academic clubs, our athletics in the fall, our music directors, our class advisors, our yearbook, our fall play director. The percentages that you see listed are the percentages that they've agreed upon for those supplementals. Those do not exceed any contract values that we have in our agreement. And then our music department volunteers for nineteen, twenty, for band, orchestra, and choir, and our extracurricular volunteers for light shines, robotics, and fly fishing. So just to highlight on these three areas, these are clubs or after-school activities that the board has approved, that the teachers are willing to put in their time on a volunteer basis. And I don't think we recognize that enough for the time and commitment that they give to those programs. And then our athletic volunteers are listed as well. So questions on any of those personnel recommendations?
You went through that quickly, considering there's a bit more. Any questions for Mrs. Savage? No. If not, I'll take a motion to approve the personnel recommendations.
So moved.
Thank you, Tom. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Roll.
Scott.
Yes.
Cinder.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So under policy items, we have two sections. The first one is just a discussion item. It is not a part of the vote, it is a first reading. And that is for policy twenty-four thirty, district-sponsored clubs and activities, and seventy-five-ten use of district premises. So Ms. Smith and I, Lindsey Smith, have been working on kind of revamping some of our district contracts and use forms. And the main difference is we looked at what other school districts were doing in the area, and looked at grouping for charges. So anything affiliated with the school directly, the robotics program we just talked about, any little kids, like Little Bear Basketball. Those programs and those that directly support us, like our youth leagues, our scouts, our booster clubs, service clubs, we would not charge a rental fee to them for the use of our district premises. The second group would be those organizations that want to use our facilities that are nonprofit and that are doing so out of community service-oriented items, and government agencies, those are together. And then the highest charges or highest fees would go to those entities outside of our district that want to utilize our buildings or for private social functions. Things like OHSAA tournaments that are held here, things like travel leagues that want to utilize our space for practices, those would be the highest charge. So I just wanted to propose that at this as a discussion item. I've emailed you the changes, I've emailed you the list, you can take a look at those if you have any questions. I'd be glad to answer them now, or we can wait until next month and have a little bit more discussion. Any questions on those? Okay. Then the second reading, these are board policies that have been recommended for updating from our NEOLA, which is our company we work with that monitors the state and federal laws, and these are keeping us in compliance. This is our second reading of these policies, and I would ask for a motion to approve those.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve. So moved. Thank you, Deb. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Roll.
Tom.
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cinder?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business and superintendent recommendations, it is time to recognize the class of two thousand nineteen. So as per your exhibit, contingent upon their completion of studies is required by the Bryan City School in the state of Ohio. We will be graduating this coming Sunday, so we look forward to that. We have an agreement with Northwest State Community College for clinical affiliation, for them to place student teachers and clinical hours here in our building, and for us to work with them. We have a Defiance College MOU, which is also for student teachers for next year. We have the approval of the two thousand nineteen, twenty student handbook for grades K to twelve, including an addendum for each building, and those were sent to you earlier for your review. We also have an agreement with the Northwest Ohio Juvenile Detention Training and Rehabilitation Center, which is an annual agreement that we work with in case students have to be placed in that location. Are there any questions regarding any of those contracts, MOUs, or agreements?
If not, I'll take a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations. So moved. Thank you, Deb.
Second.
Thank you. Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cinder.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
And for Mr. Bassett, we can, we can now report that all testing is complete. We just finished up AP testing, which is advanced placement, last week. We had eighty-four kids that took AP tests, and a total of a hundred and three tests were given. So some students take multiple advanced placement course tests. And those help them with getting college credit for English, science, math, government. I think those were our coverages. And then this week, senior lunches, senior favorites on both Friday and today. So today was chili cheese toastie day, it was a perfect day for it. And they're serving French toast skits on Friday. Senior lunch money refunds will be issued at their graduation practice, which is this Friday. And a reminder to parents for next week, for the final three days that are calamity makeup days, that we will post on social media what the menu will be each day, depending on cook's choice. And what we have left in the freezer.
Thank you, Mrs. Savage, for Mr. Bassett's report. We don't have any others. We have a reason to go into executive session, executive sessions, A, under appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, motion, demotion, compensation, employee investigation charges.
Thank you.
I'm not aware of any other reason?
Oh, I, uh, letter C, conference, or, or, we do have to discuss matters which are pending or immediate court action.
Okay. And then letter C, what Mrs. Savage just said. I will reread it. I will take a, if there are any information that it comes from that, Mrs. Savage will get it to you. Otherwise, I will take a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Thank you, Scott.
Second.
Thank you. Mike?
Mike?
Roll.
Yes. Scott?
Yes.
Cinder?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So under policy items, we have two sections. The first one is just a discussion item. It is not a part of the vote, it is a first reading. And that is for policy twenty-four thirty, district-sponsored clubs and activities, and seventy-five-ten use of district premises. So Ms. Smith and I, Lindsey Smith, have been working on kind of revamping some of our district contracts and use forms. And the main difference is we looked at what other school districts were doing in the area, and looked at grouping for charges. So anything affiliated with the school directly, the robotics program we just talked about, any little kids, like Little Bear Basketball. Those programs and those that directly support us, like our youth leagues, our scouts, our booster clubs, service clubs, we would not charge a rental fee to them for the use of our district premises. The second group would be those organizations that want to use our facilities that are nonprofit and that are doing so out of community service-oriented items, and government agencies, those are together. And then the highest charges or highest fees would go to those entities outside of our district that want to utilize our buildings or for private social functions. Things like OHSAA tournaments that are held here, things like travel leagues that want to utilize our space for practices, those would be the highest charge. So I just wanted to propose that at this as a discussion item. I've emailed you the changes, I've emailed you the list, you can take a look at those if you have any questions. I'd be glad to answer them now, or we can wait until next month and have a little bit more discussion. Any questions on those? Okay. Then the second reading, these are board policies that have been recommended for updating from our NEOLA, which is our company we work with that monitors the state and federal laws, and these are keeping us in compliance. This is our second reading of these policies, and I would ask for a motion to approve those.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve. So moved. Thank you, Deb. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mike.
Roll.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Cinder?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.